Okay, so whether they're in school or learning from home, you'll still get the same costs? Well, I will lead the back.
Question to that, if you don't excuse me, just one second. Even if they're on the Gateway program or anything like that, that's, they do not-
No, Gateway or if they're at homeschool, that's a whole different, that, that we don't receive funding for students that are homeschool.
Outside of county program?
Correct.
And so those, the schools would still be able to provide meals for children that are going to be taught at home if that is the case?
I could go off of what Walt Florence said on the Facebook blog, because I watch shit from home, and he said yes, they would be providing meals if they were enrolled in a Benton County program. So if your child was taking an online program that was provided for by Benton County, yes, your child could come to the school to get their lunch.
Well, I'm not a children, but I'm, I'm concerned about a lot of kids in this county that don't have meals.
We probably, we don't, the question was, will we continue to figure out, obviously, we can't bring them to their house, although, probably what we would do is set up something where on Monday or Tuesday, they pick up a week's, kind of like we did this summer.
Alright, thank you very much. That was my main concern, is that these kids get some food in their bellies. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Chris Holley. Hello, this is Holley. I work in the register of deeds office, and I think we have some concerns as employees at the courthouse over salaries. I hear that we've been told by some people in the know, more than we are, that we will not be getting a cost of living raise this year. As you know, there was a raise given in the last year to an employee. There have been employees hired that's been hired at a higher, at a higher base salary than what some of us that have been here ten to fifteen to thirty years are making presently. And we just have some concerns and would like some feedback on what you think's being planned to be done about our wages. I wonder some of your concerns, you say concerns, that's not very, um-
Yes, we're very concerned.
Concerns of the fact that-
They're talking down the public, it's kind of-
We haven't had any raises, we, we haven't had, okay, there was a resolution passed in two thousand and fifteen. You got a cost of living raise last year? Yes. Okay. There were, yes, and, and the resolution that was passed in two thousand and fifteen stated that when the county officials got a raise, we did the same raise. Okay, well, this year is a totally different kind of year, as you all know, it would be COVID. Yes, ma'am. It was also apparently that way last year, when we didn't get the same rate that they got. It's never said that you could have the same rate. Yes, it does. It, you get a cost of living raise, theirs are mandated by the state. Oh no, we don't know that, and that's all time, nobody's, well, upset over what they get. We just think that if we're, if we're bad, we should get a raise. I think you're bad too, but the state is not giving cost of living raises this year. I, I hate it, I'm an employee just like you, I want a pay raise just like you, I'm a teacher, but I didn't get one. Okay, so that resolution then doesn't mean anything? I'm just simply saying that there's not money to give this year. We are going to work on a handbook, and we want to do something for the employees, but just at this time, unless you want to tax it, Chris, I just don't see a way, you know? We always hear that, I mean, we've heard it for years. But we tried, we've been trying. We got a new cost of living raise last year, not what we were mandated to give by the resolution. I'm sorry to feel that way. Does anybody else from the budget committee or anybody would like to speak? Um, and I'm, I'm not the only employee that feels that way.
I was on the committee that set the pay scale, um, Dana was also on that committee, and, um, it was before this commission. And we went through, and we spent a lot of time gathering the information of how many years each employee has been here, and we set what we thought was a fair pay scale. We set at the base rate at a new employee coming in to service.
I see, I see, I see a resolution on that, and that was with education, but we're back in our lives. There's nothing about education.
This has nothing to do with education.
I've got a college degree, and I don't have any, no, I mean, that's not, you're there.
We worked on that, and we set that pay scale, and it was approved by the full commission.
Do you have a copy?
And it did state in there that if the state got a two percent cost of living raise, that the employees here would also get a two percent-
I've never seen the paper.
It's, it might be a policy-
We've been hearing from the budget for months, and nobody's brought that to our attention.
Have you looked at the policy handbook?
Yes.
And it was approved by the full commission?
I've never seen it in there.
Did the state get it, did the state get a cost of living?
No.
We put it in there because-
No, we've not, not.
In the past, the employees had gone so many years without a raise, and, and, you know, we saw that that wasn't fair, and we were like, how can we fix this? So that we can ensure the employees that they will get something every year. So that's what we said was, it's just like the elected officials, they get the same cost of living raise that the state, let me talk, let me talk, okay?
That's not, I'm not sure.
You didn't let me finish. I will explain to you what I'm saying about the elected officials. The elected officials, their raise is set by the state, and it has to do, they get the same raise that the state gets, gives their employees, and there's nothing we can do about that. So what we did was, we said, well, okay, let's set the same policy for our employees here. Let's say that if the state gives a cost of living raise to their employees, state employees, our county employees would get the same cost of living raise here. But for some reason, it's like, somebody threw that out the window, that's never happened.
I've never seen it.
We'll find it.
I've never seen it in any budget meeting.
We'll find it.
Now, I, we rarely know what's going on. You're welcome to come to every budget meeting.
It is part of that, because the last, not this, uh, commission, the last commission actually did that. When Ward and Rocky had brought a longevity claim, and turned out that the longevity, the budget committee went in with the raise, which was in the resolution. Now, it was two percent of the resolution, but, uh-
There's one reason I have a copy of it downstairs, so if you guys would like to see it.
The resolution, the handle, and the resolution for the high rise, they're clear for, alright.
What is the ha, the, the raise card from the state?
Well, indeed, it is a resolution.
Well, however, we have our premiums, the raise, all costs, we have our, we have our rates. We've ne, we, the first year, two thousand and sixteen, we got, it was the raise for the, uh, the county officials was two point zero three percent, and that's what we got. We've ne, we've got two percent every year since then. One year, four point six, six percent that the, that the officials got, and we got two points, we got two percent that year. So, now, we've never got it, except for the first year of the resolution. Yeah, we've never gotten that.
Can I add to the conversation, please?
Sure, can we press anything before you?
Yes.
Sorry, just for the record, the state has not given the state employees a raise this coming fiscal year, just for the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
We know that.
What Miss Holley is saying is accurate, there was time, oh, can y'all hook it down a little bit, please? There was time when the state gave better than four percent increases, not her, or-
Would you, Hoppers, need your phone back?
Yeah. I want, I want to talk about a subject, it's not an immediate fix, but it might shine a little light in a good direction anyway.
Thank you, sir.
I asked the mayor, and I asked the committee commissioners to greatly consider a committee formed to study the wages, to step up pay that Roseanne was talking about while the government failed, to study raises, to study longevity pay for all county employees, including the sheriff and the jail, if the sheriff's old degrees and wants to do it. This has been accomplished in the past, and the committee, I'm almost certain, is called the steering committee. Now, everybody's wondering, okay, that's a good idea, where's the money going to come from? I'm going to tell you where the money's going to come from. The money's going to come from the banks, the money's going to come from the excise tax that the banks aren't paying us. So I'm going to share some information with some of y'all that you may not know about. In two thousand and nineteen seventeen, the audited number for excise taxes, and excise taxes are what the banks paid the county for the monies earned in the county. The amount of money the county received was two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. The next year, it shrunk a little over fifty-nine thousand dollars. So, under our watch, we saw the excise tax shrink. Department of Revenue was, uh, informed, they looked into it, and they found one of our local bank's banks had filled paperwork out in progress. And I'm going to read a little bit of it to you. Department of Revenue, a mandatory draw. Attached is detail on an excise allocation, including the amount that was corrected this year due to the incorrect reporting of such and such bank, I won't get too personal, call it a name just yet. On the informational form that was sent in by them, as previously been discussed with the trustee, that's Sherry downstairs, we spoke with this bank to determine the error, and assisted them with a filing, correct forms, and ensuring their filing this year was correct. So this year, the bank filled their paperwork out correctly, and the excise tax sprung back up to two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, from fifty-nine thousand to two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. So we caught, this one bank got caught because they were under our watch, because they changed their paperwork showing their earnings in another county and not Benton County. It is, with my opinion, and nobody has shown me where I'm wrong, that the other banks in the county are doing the same thing Apex did, I don't know the name of it. Only thing is, Apex is going to go under our watch, and I'm going to give you some information. Apex has paid this year two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in excise tax. Ninety-seven, one percent of all dollars paid in excise tax is paid by Apex Bank, our second largest bank in Benton County, first bank has paid zero, not one dollar. Carol's Financing, three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, Regions, four thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars, World Finance, two thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. I encourage y'all commissioners, encourage our wonderful mayor, to encourage the Department of Revenue to look into these other banks, just like they looked into Apex Bank, and we'll have plenty of money to provide U-County workers with a nice raise, including the sheriff, including the jailers. That being said, if there's any other questions on this matter, I'm going to yield the floor.
Good night, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'll say, you know, there's multiple moving parts here, and when it comes, there's salaries and there's bonuses. And you can, we can pay bonuses based upon any income, we can bring, have a good sales tax year, and we can pay one-time bonuses if we want. Uh, we can do salary supplements one time through these excise taxes. The risk in using excise or severance or sales taxes are that those particular taxes are dependent upon the economy, just as our schools are very heavily relying upon sales tax years. And we knew for, from about two thousand and eight to two thousand and eighteen, we had ten declining years of sales taxes, which greatly impacted our schools. And that's why the county dips into its reserve funds to begin funding the schools. No, it's no different when it comes to payroll. The thing is, and I'm all for comprehensive payroll readjustments, we, we, we underpay, uh, the employees, especially starting employees. However, how you're going to pay for that is solely reliant upon property taxes. Property taxes are your base mechanism for funding county operations. Sales tax, excise tax, severance taxes, all these other discretionary taxes are those fluff items that we decide that we're going to pay, we're going to pay more roads, or we're going to hire an additional employee or two, or we're going to build something or put something in capital. But when it comes to payroll, you have to base that on what you're bringing in from your property taxes. Now, what did we have this year? Why is this year different? It's because this year we went through a tax recertification year, alright? That, first and foremost, my challenge to the budget committee was, let's get to the certified rate, live one year on the certified rate. We're going to know whether we're living within our means, or whether we're, we have to ante up a little bit for, for county employees and salaries and these other endeavors that we want to do, but at least we're going to have a more true and accurate number. The reason this was a different year than the other years is because we went with the certified rate, and we did not want to raise taxes. Okay, we wanted to know where our baseline was as far as our county revenues. Now, unfortunately, we were actually working on this a year ago, to begin looking at our human resource policies, our county handbooks, goodness, the sheriff has been operating on one since two thousand and three or four. I, I don't even know what year the county, the county employees are operating on. We should have been readjusting our county handbook about every three or four years, and we've done a lousy job at doing that. So, so, so we are going to embark over this next year, and I've talked to county, uh, department heads. We're not smart enough to figure this out, I'd love to say that we are, but I'm telling you right now, we're not in the, we're not in the business of human resources and payroll and all that kind of stuff. We need to bring in the experts who are, and so I'm going to go, I'm going to solicit a few HR firms that will come in, sit down with the budget committee, sit down with the commissioners, this team, uh, that, that commissioner president advises, and, and we'll get the feedback from everybody, and we'll let them spit out the solution. But at the end of that's going to come, at the end of the budget year, okay, when we know our numbers, we know what we can do, and, um, and we need a plan that will last for a long time. And we, and we, if we're doing it right, we'll re-tweak it every three or four years as the, as times change. Now, what can we do in the meantime? From the administrative level, I know that we're eighty-eight thousand dollars in the black, I believe, on this last budget, I think, am I right, Ms. Bratcher? I think we're eighty-eight, first time we've been in the black, okay, in a long time. So we haven't had the luxury of being able to look at payroll raises in the past, we do this year. So, so I've, I've talked with another department head about coming through mid-year, let us do a study, let us see what we need to do in the meantime with some of this excess that we have, but it will not go into a salary line, it will go into a supplement line. So it will be treated as a bonus and not a raise, okay? Because again, raises are based on property taxes. We cannot impact our property tax revenues to salaries until we know a true number, and that won't come until the end of the year. But I'm all for coming up with a mid, uh, uh, year budget amendment, uh, that would allocate some of these circumstances that we've had towards a salary supplement. So that's just to kind of give us a, a mindset of how to approach the future. I don't think the, I don't think the county commission doesn't want to shout the employees, we've talked about this for a long time. But how we give those raises is, is, is long-lasting, and we need to have that number right when we do it. Uh, it's the same thing with the schools, I mean, they see fluctuating revenues, uh, the highway department sees fluctuating revenues. We don't need to be, just because we have a good year with sales taxes, doesn't mean we have a good year with property taxes. The property taxes have done right, bring us the same amount of money every year. So, so it's, salaries and payroll should be commensurate upon the way our property tax collections are going, and we just wasn't, we just, this was not a good year to take risks with our property tax allocations.
Anybody else wish to?
Well, I'm not finished yet about the salaries, I'm sorry. I've had several phone calls about, um, a new employee that has been hired, that her salary was set at twenty-seven thousand dollars, for a new employee, Mel County, um, employment, and her background for anything. And according to this pay scale, it, it takes like nine years or so to make it up, nine to twelve years, you can get up to twenty-seven thousand dollars. I'm not talking, I'm not, that, this is not any disrespect to the office holder, but this is not fair. We set a scale, and we set the amount for a new employee, it's in the scale. And it also says, we put this in here, because in the years past, this has always been the problem, we would set a scale, salary scale, and it goes good for a year or two, and then somebody decides they want to give a raise without going through the full commission, so they give their employee a raise, well, then that starts getting the scale off balance, and then you've got two or three employees that are making way above what they were supposed to be making according to the years of service. And then you've got other employees that get upset about it, because it's not fair. I've been here twelve years, and I only make this amount of money, and then a new employee comes in the door, and they're like, this ain't what I made. That's always been the problem, so this has been addressed so many times, and we have set pay scales, we have set policies, and it seems like, for some reason, they just get thrown out the window, nobody ever goes by those policies.
Well, and again, if I may, um, the first approval is the budget. So when you vote on a budget line for payroll, you're giving your approval. So, so the county, a department official, once they have that approval of that payroll line, so long as they're acting within that payroll line, they're not really, by the technical terms, violating policy. You have approved their payroll policy by giving them that much in the line. Now, a good question to ask would be, does everyone have to start off at entry level? So that, that is what needs to be addressed, because, because if you had a doctorate, a medical doctor, uh, with tons of experience, do they have to start off at step one? So that, to me, we've got multiple poorly worded policies, resolutions, we've gotten ourselves into a quagmire. I can tell you right now, uh, I, I gave the animal shelter director a raise, but keep in mind, I said director. They've got three employees under them, a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget that they have to manage. No director of any department should be a starting entry level employee. But we have been applying that to that position since the beginning of time, thinking that they were under, uh, I guess, a department. Now, have, they were an employee within the animal shelter, that might be a different story, but we were starting directors off at entry level. So, so our policy, again, is flawed, and we're going to address that. Um, and I hope we get the right professionals to show us how to write it, because I tell you, we're not capable of writing policy. I tell you right now, we, we have messed up the sheriff's handbook, we have probably messed up our county handbook. I don't want to rely on us to do this, unless we have some retiree who's an HR professional for so many years. Uh, the problem is, is we've got too many cooks in the kitchen, and we need to go to the expertise when it comes to comprehensive reform. Uh, but at the end of the day, so long as that department head was operating within his payroll line, and it did not require an additional increase in the, his budget, then it did not need that second approval, you see? Uh, again, this is just a quagmire of confusion, I don't think anyone will, will get it right, but, uh, I do believe we have the heart to do it over the coming months. Is that timing up, is that compensation up?
I do, I do understand that if it's in their budget, and it's in that line, they can use that money, I know that. But I also know that as an elected official, I think I would show a little bit better respect to the other employees and maybe the other employees in the office, rather than bringing in a brand new employee and making their salary a lot more than the same employee that's sitting in their office. And I'm not talking about just one office, Sam, I'm not talking about just yours only, I'm talking about any office. You know, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, you know?
I don't know, sir.
Uh-huh, you know what I'm talking about. So, um, the way I look at it, when we put that in the, um, resolution that an elected official should come before the commission, if they want to give a raise, or if they want to change that, any salary in that pay scale, why don't they do that? Because, like I said, over the years, this is what's happened. They don't come before the commission, they just set their salaries, and then we've got all these different salaries that are, um, you know, out of balance. This one's making more than this one, and this one's been here more than that one. And I'm just saying, I just don't think that it's fair to just, on their own, give somebody that kind of salary, a brand new employee coming in. With all of our other employees being here too.
Same for, that's a good thing.
Yeah, but, uh, first of all, I got two employees here working tonight, Kathy Bolshir, got thirty-five years in.
Sam, could you come to the podium, please?
Yeah. We got two employees here tonight, Kathy Bolshir, got thirty-five years, I have to play him a thirty. If you want to go to talk about scales, the scales have been followed because there's people making more money because of them, and they get more years in them. As far as the employee I hired, I don't have been a budget that I've often recorded. I've never had the county commission request a woman. I didn't work, this employee I brought in had thirty years' experience in the private sector and attorney office. I spoke, I actually discussed it with them. I didn't bring her in at a higher wage than all my other employees. I actually, in my office, that I led to a private server, at one time I had five full-time employees, now I have four full-time and one part-time. So I have worked hard to save this county money, and you will be able to pass budgets, it must be spent, I turn money back in on yearly basis. Uh, as far as employees in courthouse, we got some great employees in courthouse, and they deserve paying raises. And, uh, if y'all have any questions, just ask them.
Do they have questions for Sam?
I did get a chart from Gail that's going with all the employees, their years of experience, and how much they get paid. Yes, it's not in line, there's several, if they want county employees precisely what I hired, it's different from the rest.
I have a question.
Just one.
Alright, when you were, uh, did you consider the county policy?
Did I consider the county policy?
Yeah.
I did, that's why I can discuss it with the county mayor prior to it. Because, because-
We're the one that approves it.
Because different mayors and different county commissioners has had different policies. They've always said, you know, as long as you don't use more in your budget, your line, you, you know, use it as you say fit.
Well, I think probably the way to resolve this problem is to, uh, like you said, uh, the policy is, is flawed and doesn't have the correct language in it.
We had someone that was literally online, ready to come, COVID hit, you know, and then they just backed out of it due to travel reasons and things like that, so, uh, we were going to look at this. I would say that, um, you know, at the end of the day, I've asked a couple of department head officials, elected officials, say, listen, first of all, we can't come with a complaint and expect these guys to figure it out. Now, no, 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 no insult here, but what I'm getting at is, you county commission isn't always the best resource of a solution. So the thing to do is, to make it easy on the county commission, is to come to the county commission with a solution and not a complaint, you know what I mean? So this is, we know that this is an in-depth topic with a lot of multiple moving parts, that, that we need a lot of thought to. Because the last thing I want us to do is to come here with a re, yet another resolution that's poorly worded, policy that's poorly structured, and we're just going to continue messing it up. We need to come with a solid solution, and, and again, I, one of my recommendations is that we come back later in the year, and if the economy is sustaining somewhat, and our sales taxes are not going down right now, they're good. But if we can sustain the economy that we're on, it gives the county commission a lot more flexibility. Now, the big decision's going to be is, do we do a mid-year salary adjustment in the form of bonuses or supplement? Because that's not paid to, that's not tied to a payroll increase, which is tied to your property taxes, okay? Or do we come back knowing that property taxes are going up? I think, uh, our property assessor has even advised us, you know, just the impact of loans by itself is going to be a fifty thousand dollar increase to our property taxes. That's good news. I know we've got other inventory, uh, coming on board within our property, uh, tax collections that aren't on this budget. This is new building, new construction, new property taxes. So I want to say there's hope for a better day tomorrow, but this one year, this tax recertification year is our most critical year. We, to me, we could have raised taxes this year and, and done like past county commissions, but it doesn't mean we always had the right number. We were dealing with a lot of inaccurate numbers. And my recommendation to the budget and the county commission was, let's just see if we can go with the tax certification rate for one year. That's going to tell us where our truth is, if we're living within our means, and give us- That's going to tell us where our truth is, if we're living within our means and give us more consistency. So just, just things to ponder, uh, but, but as you came to me early on, you said that you had someone uh, that you wanted to attract into that position that wasn't technically like a starting level position. This person has commensurate experience and I recommended him. So as long as he stays within his budgeted numbers, he should have some autonomy to, to operate this.
I think somebody, I got a question for Sam. Did this employee have any other county service?
Private sector.
Did she have any experience ever working in a general sessions office?
No, she did not work in a general sessions or circuit court, like me, even though she worked on an attorney's board judge for nearly thirty years.
So is, is that why you based your, your initial salary? Is that how you base that?
Any more questions for Sam? Hey, Wanda, when you first.
Yes.
Sorry, Ryan, I'll be next. I thought she had her end up.
First of all, I said I wouldn't have come up here tonight because I'm going to propose a resolution coming next month to ask all y'all for my raises. I feel that we should go by the resolution. That's what it's for. Um, I mean, the handbook, that's what it's for. Um, Roseanne said it has something to start out with. You come before the commission asking for your employee raise because you feel she deserved more. Um, you said that that way we could follow suit and everything. If we think our, our employees deserve more, then we should come and ask for it too. I did ask for it in the budget for the last three years, just a certain percentage. I never asked for it in a resolution. I feel my employees deserve as much. Nothing against them or that employee because everybody, like you said, has a college education, yes. That maybe they know more. But did she know all about that office? No, probably not. Just like the rest of us probably don't know about our offices. But I feel that was wrong. I thought that when you asked for yours to come before the commission, they had to approve it. This one never come before the commission. So I want to know how it was justified for her to get that, even though it was in the budget. I just wanted to let y'all know I, I don't think it's fair. So I will be back next month with a resolution to ask for my raises.
And, and you and I had talked earlier and I said, let's get the numbers because.
Right.
My thing is, I don't want to do just your department. I want to do the trustees department. I want to do the registrar dees. I want to do, I want to do the, the appropriate departments. Else we're going to be coming back each month with a new resolution and a new resolution, new resolution. Again, I've said, based upon our numbers, we've got our budget advisor here, uh, we, we're in the black some. You know, we, we have some room for flexibility and, uh, if the county commission, they can make an amendment tonight to this budget to, to give an increase if they wanted to. I don't know, I would defer to the budget chairman on that. But they, they amended the, the budget on the fly tonight if they wanted to.
I think the budget committee, I, I can't see for everybody because we were just made aware of any kind of.
I think I'm not going to ask for mine because I will do a resolution. I understand you want to do everybody. I'm over at the county, county clerk's office, so I have asked for that. But I am going to be asking for mine, just like in the half of the year when you asked for Ashley. No disrespect to you, but I do have faith in all my county commissioners because, and I feel like y'all do an awesome job because that's what the people elected them to do. So I feel like when we elect them to do something, we should come before them and ask them because that's what they're here for. So I will be back next week. That's all, I mean, next month, that's all I'm going to say. I don't want any negativity. I feel it was all wrong and I just want to say I feel that was wrong. And last month in the commission meeting, it said that this county was in better financial state than it's ever been. If it is, then I have faith in all y'all to, uh, do some of the raises.
If the state had gave them any raises, wanted the budget committee would have stepped to the plain deck those.
They gave them mandated, but they didn't give a cost of living raise to the employees. And you know, if the county gives the handbook for twenty-one thousand, that's what it should stick out to. That's all. I'm not saying that you're not right. I'm just saying, from a budget standpoint, you brought that on last week. You really. Yes. I did, I'm not trying to certify and I don't want to give arguments because I'm not a negative person and I'm not a negative person. I want you to know what I feel like from my office and I'll come to you next month.
Wanda, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
Um, continue your battle. Bring the resolution to us. What's the conversation? Don't let nobody talk you out of it.
Yes, Wanda, you may. Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm looking at, okay, so in the two thousand twenty budget, you asked for seventy-three, nine seventy-one. All right. So this year, it says department request, okay? So this comes from you because I believe, it just says seventy-six, six sixty-nine, which I believe is our mandated, you know, the county official's raise. So, so is that inaccurate? What did, what did you ask for in your budget?
I handled that with y'all next month.
Mayor, I believe you're the wrong line item, sir. I believe you need to be the.
I have a budget that I'm supposed to ask for and the raises in it, but it didn't go through what I asked for the percentage. So therefore, what you're looking at is what it went back to. I don't have to stand in front of me and tell you yes or no, but I have to look at it.
So you get to say this.
I want to come as a county clerk to ask the full commission for my raises.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Wanda. Anybody else have questions? Mr. Bickers?
Deputy of State District, I just want to make sure when we start rewriting this handbook, that we allow the flexibility to the elected officials to run their office. I don't think it's our job to sit up here and decide whether or not Sam Rainwater can give somebody a raise or Wanda can give somebody a raise in their office because they know the duties, they know responsibilities, they know the experience, they know who's working hard in that office, and I wouldn't see us giving them flexibility to run their office.
Well, I have asked in that and no disrespect, but I feel like that that would be hard to sit here and they've never said a word and they probably don't think nothing about it, but that would be hard for me to think. I've been here as many years as those two buddies have and would come in making three thousand or a little under that. And, but like I said, I'm here for the clerk's office, not all the others. But I don't have that, that, anybody quitting or, I, I have thankful employees who stay there the whole time. They even worked on present of, of Roseanne. So she knows how hard they work and feel that we should be able to budget the employee raises.
That flexibility.
But the handbook does not say that.
That flexibility, yeah.
Right. We've not ever had that.
And I'll just say this, Wanda, and no disrespect, the, uh, you know, I would have been the first one to jump on your bandwagon and advocate for your cause. And this is the, this week is the first time I've heard of this. You know what I mean? So.
Well, you spoke after Ashley, she's not doing that next morning.
And I said, propose it in your budget. So now I'm looking at your budget and I'm going, all right. So, and I'm just looking at what you requested, okay? So I, I don't know what the discussion was to the budget committee. But again, I go by the deputy's line. So, uh, department request, a hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars. Commission approval, a hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars, a thousand and twenty-two extra from the previous year. So, so what I would like to know is what that original department request was. Was it ever made on paper?
Yes, I took, I had a proposal and one that was a regular budget. But I'm, like I said, I don't have a yen in front of me, but if you were to get the pay or I'll get you tomorrow, we can figure that out.
Okay, and that, and that's what I'm getting at is, I need something to advocate, you know, and that's what I said, I need.
But I'm asking the commission.
Well.
As chair, though, we did discuss pay. We held off to the end to see if there was money left and how things were looking. Uh, Phil had a whole pay scale worked out. We were talking about it. The COVID hit. And if the state can give the mandated pay raises, it's not like where it gets you, but like.
But what I'm saying is, if you have that touch in your budget, you could put back to the general fund. Maybe all the county could quit going pro and go about what's aligned for what we say. But like he says, if they can make it, or we can give ours a raise. I know the county's in deficit, but we don't keep giving someone twenty-seven thousand if mine's been here twenty-five years. That just barely makes it back.
But you said we.
As a county, we. When I say that, I'll, y'all, I mean, we as a county. And it's been happening, so I have come three years in pro to ask for.
And we did give cost of living.
I'm asking about the cost of living. I'm asking about what I asked for.
That, that's what we have been given in the past is a raise of cost of living.
That's for the whole offices. Right. But I'm going to ask them.
All right. Do you think else?
Well, all right. In reference to Mr. Bickers, um, we're not trying to take any kind of flexibility away from an elected official. It's a law that they are elected to run that office and we can't change that. But I also think that as an elected official, you would be fair in what raises you do give. And even though you stay within your budget, just because you've got, oh, I've got ten thousand extra dollars here, I'm going to spend it. I'm going to give it to an employee. That doesn't mean that you should do it that way. That's what I, and why should you? Just because you have the extra money? And, and if we gave the elected officials the flexibility of setting their own pay scale, then our budget would never bound. We'd probably been, you know, gone home because we couldn't afford following if we didn't have some kind of scales to go by and set.
All I'm saying is, I'd like to see them working within their budget, but give them some flexibility because they have a better understanding of the duties and responsibilities of each employee than we do.
But they also should be fair.
I'll just add one quick thing. I'm just looking at registrar dees. Uh, there was a thirty-nine hundred and seventy dollar increase on the deputy line. On the property assessor basically was none. I think Brian's probably going to allude to that those are set by the state. County trustee's office had a thousand dollar increase on the deputy's line. County clerks, a thousand twenty-two. Circuit court, thirty-five, forty-seven. So all but the assessor's office went up. I'll, I'll do some investigation as to whether these were mandated, you know, like uh, staff raises or something like that. But, um, again, I, I want to be their biggest advocate. I think everybody does. But I, I don't want to come to you without a good plan. So I'm going to focus on bringing a good plan.
Ours is not set by the state.
Okay. And, um.
It's set down these halls.
Okay. And y'all got, y'all still got what?
I had a staff raise in my budget.
Staff, yeah, okay.
Go ahead, Ryan. Yes.
Uh, I didn't have a whole lot of numbers, but I will state some facts. Uh, so the new Love's truck stop that we're also proud of, uh, the person that walks in the door selling gas and RV sandwiches is making, if they work forty hours, they're making over twenty-two thousand dollars a year. Uh, so, uh, they are paying more than our starting salary. What has been voted on in two thousand and fifteen by the commission and set. I think Ms. Roseanne's been trying to make that point tonight on the twenty-one thousand. Uh, I did have an employee a couple of years ago that I had to budget for her full salary because, uh, during, the way it failed with her potential retirement date, the budget was going to need to be passed. So I could not, uh, lower that budget line item because you never know what might happen. So, um, I did budget that employee that I think that employee was about twenty-eight thousand. Uh, that employee did wind up retiring and so I went to the powers-to-be at that time because I haven't been around here as long as a lot of other people. And I said, what is the starting salary for a brand-new employee in one of these offices? And I was told that it was voted on, I was given the resolution that was voted on at twenty-one thousand dollars. I put twenty-one thousand dollars salary in the Camden Chronicle and I got minimal applications in. I was very blessed to find the employee. She was actually, just had been laid off that had some computer experience and stuff like that. So, uh, so that year, my, uh, my extra money uh, went back to the county. It wasn't divvied out to this one and that one and, and then alternating the entire, uh, wage schedule moving forward from here on act. I don't see this commission taking money from someone once it's been given to them. So I believe Roseanne made this comment back a few months ago, uh, you know, when it was voting on, when the mayor brought it up about Ms. Ashley's and stuff, that this is going to open Pandora's box with this, with this salary here and there, here and there, here and there. And I think that's what we've seen. I think our major issue is the twenty-one thousand dollars starting. Now, I will say this on the defense of the county. I think we have an above-average benefit package. I think our insurance is very good, a benefit package. I think we have an above-average, uh, vacation and sick pay accrue, uh, when you look at the private sector. So I believe that our employees are benefiting from that because you do take salary and the benefit package and add that in to a total compensation of an employee. But, uh, but when it comes down to it, it's what somebody's bringing home a week to pay for groceries and electric bill and stuff like that. And I do not think that we're competing in the private sector on that. I believe that's a consensus, consensus tonight. I believe some of these moves that's been made by department heads is because of that, uh, issue. And I believe that if we tried to, uh, come up with a, you start at the starting salary and then you look at your loyalty. As far as this office and that office, we all have to pass audits from the comptroller. We are all required to do very important, specific duties. So, um, my employees are the most important ones in the courthouse. And I'm sure Wanda's employees are the most important in the courthouse to her. And I'm sure Brett's employees are the most important to him. So you see where this sounds, employees are the most important to him. So you see where this thing's going. Everybody's employees are the most important to them because they are in there with them every day. Uh, you know, we have had perfect audits. Do you think that's because of me? It's because of the work of my employees. So, um, you know, I know that this has been a difficult year. I have, I have stood before you many times, uh, with the certified rate. I am very proud of that, that we accomplished that. But, uh, you know, uh, we definitely got to address this issue moving forward because, uh, the county's most important asset is its employees. And I think we would all agree to that. I know as a department head, I know Mr. Florence with his employees in the school system. Every department head but back there, every department head would agree to that. So, uh, I, you know, I know it's a very difficult job, what the commission has to do in the budget committee. But when, when you start down this path of, well, this job is going to pay, you know, this person's going to come in at this and then you know, my employee, Miss Sharon, back there, has been here for fifteen years. Uh, she's my go-to. She's the whole office go-to in the assessor's office. And yet, uh, you can imagine how demoralizing that is for her if, uh, if someone brand-new comes in at the same rate that she's served faithfully the county for the same amount of time. So, uh, you know, I, I, I just want to say that I, I do appreciate, I hope the mayor pursues this with a professional HR person and that, uh, that we, before we get really, really down, far down this road where it's all this way, that way, this way, that we, that we, this comes to the head and we address this immediately.
I would just respond by saying, it's not opened up Pandora's box. It's opened up reality. And it, and if anything, it shows how low county employees are made. And, and I've always said, I wish a good employer would come in here and pay good money so that they can tell us to hit the road jack. I mean, you know, no one's forcing anyone to work, you know, so, so, but, but I, I, I want the day where there's better opportunity out there so that they can tell us, I'm not working for.
The only reason why we're not in full crisis mode in the courthouse is because we have had faithful employees for ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years that, you know, that's.
I'm not saying we shouldn't make changes to our budget. I'm not saying, but the budget is a working document.
Well, then there's, you know, there's amendments and things and, and things that can be done, you know, uh, I, I don't want to derail the whole entire budget process. There's been a lot of work put in to get to this point tonight. But I think it's definitely been brought up that, you know, I think we definitely need to, to look at it.
I will say the budget committee did have plans after the budget process is finished to address the handbook, to get HR in to help us achieve what y'all are asking. But it came to our knowledge a week ago that there was even issues. And Rome was not built in a day. We are trying to make it better for all employees, but.
As far as the state raise goes, I could be wrong on that. I believe the county is a year behind what the state does. I know there was discussion at the legislative level on department heads uh, because the comptroller had set the raise for the department heads. Uh, that may be something that you need to check into, ma'am, on that. I'm not for sure.
The elected officials are behind one year.
Well, and so then in turn, that resolution should follow that. So state got raises last year.
It appears on the wording of the resolution. Is the resolution tied to the elected officials or is it tied to the state?
It's tied to the state, the way I understand it.
Well, if it's tied to the state, then it's not out of the state issue.
So then it's current year for the state?
No, no.
Okay, so that's your, that's your issue. Is it a year behind or is it, is it current year?
For the elected official, it's a year behind.
Okay, I did not know for sure on that.
I've got a question.
Or can I step away? Am I...
Yes. You may have questions.
I'm gonna say one thing and then I promise I won't say anything else, okay? And I'm just, I know we need to move on. Sam, this is not personal attack towards you, I promise. I worked for you for five years. You're a good boss and I enjoyed every minute of it. I would be feeling this way if there was another elected official. If it had been Sherry or if it had been Ryan or if it had been Wanda. I would feel the same way. So this is not personal attack towards you.
I have a late assiduous personality. When it comes to the first level, I'll look someone with experience. I didn't want to start somebody off entry-level. Not found somebody who had a lot of years' experience, not worked with the ability, Camden Commission may be able to work with, might as well get the Camden way.
All right, Ms. Dana.
Okay. First of all, on one of the lines four-six-nine-eight-zero.
Let me tell me a page.
Yes, the K N six.
Page six.
Page six. Where you've got, set one to the bottom, count now. You've got three-star in there. That also means to say for the youth leadership because part of that is for the youth leadership. And that was on it.
Wait, it's the...
Sets page six.
I think your page is a bit critical now. Uh, do you see how many that, the count number?
Four-six-nine-eight-zero. Four-six-nine-eight-zero.
In the general line. Okay.
That needs to say for the youth leadership also because when Heather calls up there and asks how much is in there, we need to have it where it's stated that way. Because we have to have youth leadership for a three-star.
It's, it's just an internal, uh, in piece of information. It has nothing to do with states or budgets. So it's just a piece of information.
It is. That's exactly what it is.
Well, it's a piece of information. We just typed in it.
The next thing is on my page seven. I don't know where it's printed on yours. But you're increasing the commissioner's pay?
Yes, we do.
Okay, we can vote on that all you want, but it does not take effect for two years.
It's, uh, I, I will tell you that. In the rules of order, it's, it's listed to the fact to date. And only time they go two years, if it don't go, it goes to the following budget year. They don't do that this time.
What that was told. What I was told.
He was told, but we got rules of orders. We go by ten-year rule.
You have your rules of order, but this is a state. Because we are elected officials, we can't vote for our own raises. We can vote for it and the next commission can get it, but we don't do our own.
I've not seen anything in that writing myself. I've never seen it. The rules of order will actually tell you that. You read the rules of orders that we passed. It may be with some other, but with us it is.
All right, a second. Moving on.
All right, well, that, all right. So the county mayor, I haven't got through each one of them. The election commissioner and all that, all have, the state has sit down for raises for all of them?
If they were a state mandated raise, they got it. And if the employees got a step raise, they were given. That's what we have in.
But they, the legislator has voted on giving them raises this year? I was under the understanding that they were not doing it.
The elected officials are receiving their raises this year. I double-checked the comptroller's office. I talked to Adam to see that.
Okay.
That's because they are one year behind.
Right. Next year, they got it. Let's get it unless the economy has a big difference.
Okay, and then the library. Okay.
Give me the account number.
Line's on twenty-three.
What's the...
Five-six-five-zero-zero.
Okay.
Page twenty-third. Okay, we have the MOE on that. Make it to that first. We have got to give her the exact same amount. And I talked to Susan on this. She said it was supposed to be the same amount. It has to be the same amount or we're gonna go back through what we did eight years ago where they take books out of our library and other resources. We do not want that. She said put it in any line but salaries.
Ms. Dana, I have that show as, uh, one thousand, one hundred dollars more than the year before.
I show that estimated for twenty-twenty.
It keeps on by estimated. It has to be budgeted.
Okay, then two, two-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty and you got two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-eight. That's less.
I have two-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty. If you'll see the note on line four-thirty-two, it says to add twelve-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-two from the prior year rollover.
Well, now, okay. Well, I'm going by bottom line is what I'm going by.
Yes, if you add the twelve-thousand...
And I'm going commissioner approval of the twenty-one and, um, the budget. And that's totally different.
Well, if you add the twelve-thousand-three-sixty-two, it's two-eighty-two-nine-hundred.
And it should show in the total.
It does on what I'm looking at. I don't know what you're looking at when I'm looking at it.
Well, that's the one I was given. What about you?
Right here. I'm standing right here.
That was the department request.
Yeah, I'm...
That's the line. I mean, you know, it, I'm sorry, it's confusing this all get-out.
I'm kidding. The both columns on mine say two-eighty-two-nine-thirty.
Mine do not.
For an increase of your, you one thousand, one hundred dollars.
Okay, mine do not.
If you move it back. What she said, if you add the twelve-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-two.
Yeah, but that, I, I go by the what's listed here on the totals, the way it should be. When you look at lines, and I took accounting, when you're looking at lines, there was the total, period.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Hey, we're, we're in new ages now.
But I don't care. I looked at it and I know what lines are. Lines haven't changed.
Did you have any questions, Ms. Dana?
Not yet. But I also do not like that you guys cut the chamber. I'm not for that. It's in here someplace. Hell, if I know.
Dana, are you coming up to find the draft?
I think so. And I'm done.
All right, any other questions before we majority go on to break the lead?
Good Summers, good Summers. Would you like to speak, sir? Would you like to speak? Come right over here, sir. Clint, you come over in here. Yellow tie. You look sharp there.
I'm Paul Summers. I live in the south end of the county. I made a promise to the, uh, to the administration back a couple of years ago when I retired from the bench. I said, "I'm not gonna come to your county commission meetings and complain about potholes not being filled up or raising taxes or, for the most part, garbage and stuff like that." I said, "But if you want me to help, I'll be glad to help in any way I can. But you gotta ask me because I'm not gonna come up here and sit on the front row and complain about stuff. But if you ask me, I'm gonna tell you the truth." Well, now I'm chairman of audit committee and, uh, I really enjoy being that, being there and I really appreciate that opportunity. The reason I came here tonight is that, uh, I've been following the budget committee's activities and I've been following some of the activities of some of the other departments. And I wanna just tell you how very pleased I am and how I wanna show my appreciation for what you're doing tonight. Assuming that everything goes like it has been told we will go, then I wanna just tell you how important that is. You know, Benton County is part of state government. And in the Tennessee Constitution, I believe it's Article Two, Section twenty-three to twenty-four, it says, "The function of the legislative body, the primary function of the legislative body is that no government money will be spent unless it is appropriated for the next fiscal year." In other words, just like a family budget, we can't write a check on July the first unless the money has been appropriated prior to the fiscal year, like you're gonna hopefully do tonight or else you'll be in default. And so having, having experience at, at the state level, let me just tell you, I am so proud of what you're doing. I'm proud of the county employees. I'm proud of management. I'm proud of the fact that you're living up to your responsibilities. The primary function of the legislative body is to pass laws, is to provide a forum for people to discuss and to dispute and to, and to decide what policy is. But the most important thing is to provide revenue for services of that particular institution or that particular subdivision of government, and that's what you're doing. So assuming that we don't have to stop the clock at eleven forty-five PM on June the thirtieth, like I was there when the legislature did that one time, uh, before they passed the budget this fiscal year, I wanna tell you thank you very much for your hard work and for your diligent application. I appreciate it. Thank you.
We have one question before we end.
Let's take a five-minute break. You need to adjourn for your...
Can I have a motion to adjourn by the way?
I'll make that motion.
So if you're, second by powers, all in favor?
Take a five-minute break, come back and we'll start. Special. You still there, Hopper?
You still there, Hopper?
Did you get where I was saying that wrong? Hey, you can do that.
We have to do the last.
Let's start working on it tomorrow.
Hey, I've got a good idea. I've got it. And the boys I talk to all agree with it, so.
Will do.
All rise. Benton County County Committee is now set for the plan chair.
Thank you. Mr. Doyle, would you give us a blessing, please?
Yes, sir, let's pray together, please. Heavenly Father, Lord, we do thank you for this day. We thank you for this evening. We thank you for these, our elected officials. Pray you very special blessings upon them. Give them wisdom, have them make right choices, Father. Father, we thank you for this community. We thank you for this nation. Father, our nation is in turmoil right now. And we pray that you would just calm the things that are going on that are so out of line, Father. Peaceful protests are one thing, but destruction is another. So, Father, we pray that you'll reunite our nation, allow things to get back to some normality. Pray for those dealing with the COVID-19. And just pray that you'll just bless our nation in a mighty way as you have for over two-hundred-and-fifty years. Father, we love you and we thank you for all that you do. Bless us this evening. We pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Protection, blessed and blessed.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Why don't we give roll call, please?
Daryl Gates?
Here.
Ronnie Crawford? Mary Powers, here. Angie Kern?
Here.
Don Patton?
Here.
Dana Ferguson?
Here.
Kenneth Miller?
Here.
Rocky Preston?
Shob Logan.
Alia Dye? Norman Fraser?
Here.
Gary Firth?
Here.
Sonny Hall?
Please help out this public.
Sonny Hall?
Thank you, Sonny.
Bill Mountain?
Yes.
Doug Vickers?
Here.
Michelle Hill?
Here.
Janet Heaton?
Here.
Roseanne Ward is here. Ward Planin?
Here.
Now, before we have a quorum, moves a line out on five. Approval of the agenda. Motion, Miss Dana?
Second.
Miss Channing, second. Any discussion? No discussion, of course, carries. Anybody on the citizen? Anybody sign the list out there to speak?
I don't think there was any. Everybody from all those up there.
So, this is line item seven, Commissioner Ford. Would like to speak, any question is called. I want to speak. Moving on now to line item eight. County Mayor? I'd give to attorney, Black Peepers, Mayor.
I would say, I thought in our public meeting, Commissioner Firths and I do believe is right on what she suggested, that a county legislative body cannot vote themselves a raise, but can set it in place for the next election. That would require an amendment to this budget. I'm one of those that would also advocate for that as well, just like it would employee raises in the sense that y'all are paid half of what surrounding counties are. And so, it would be commensurate upon what, like I said, other counties were paying their county bodies. So, I do believe that was definitely in order. On the library budget as well, I do think that in the end, they do get their final amount in there, that additional twelve thousand dollars. So, it's the same as last year, or I guess their budget request, but they...
Does Attorney like to speak when it matters?
No.
Not to move us to line item nine. Approval of the past minutes?
We didn't get any matters.
We didn't get no minutes. We got no minutes, just get back, save it. Next, be... Line item ten, resolution to approve an immediate to the private act authorizing Benton County to levy an occupancy tax to the state government on hotel, lodge, and campground.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull that motion. That motion, the governor has not signed his appropriations in that particular act that was passed yet. He has ten days to do so from July first. So, technically, we should not offer that before the governor signs his portion first. I hate that he hasn't because July is a very busy month and Nathan Number Four State Park probably was gonna have a lot of hotel revenue in the month of July that we will not be able to recognize. But we'll come back next month after the governor or the next meeting when the governor has signed his portion, and we'll propose that amendment then. But I'm gonna pull it for right now.
Motion twenty-nine oh-one has been pulled. Moves a line item eleven, resolution to transfer funds in the amount of one thousand within the election commission budget in order to cover the board members' fees for state mandate meeting during the month of June. Is it motion?
Motion.
Miss Dana?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? No discussion, roll call.
Daryl Gates?
Yes.
Ronnie Crawford? Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Kern?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Alia Dye? Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Gary Firth?
Yes.
Sonny Hall? Bill Mountain?
Yes.
Doug Vickers?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Heaton?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Ward Planin?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries.
Question.
Yes.
Can you turn the air down, please? It's freezing in here.
Then you're gonna get use of new blood now. Get gloves, I'm getting old. Sweating up here.
It ain't nothing about aging, I'm cold, too.
He is cold, too. I'm a company.
I'm about to burn up over here.
There you go, I spread too. Line item twelve, resolution to transfer funds in the amount of one thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars within the county clerk budget in order to cover the negative balance in the payroll account. Motion. That motion.
Motion.
Mr. Gates?
Second.
Second, Miss Dana. Any discussion? There's no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Daryl Gates?
Yes.
Ronnie Crawford? Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Kern?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Alia Dye? Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Gary Firth?
Yes.
Sonny Hall? Bill Mountain?
Yes.
Doug Vickers?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Heaton?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Ward Planin?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries.
Motion carries. Line item thirteen, resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of five hundred dollars from the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund in order to pay the outstanding invoice received from sanitation, management, waste tarers pole. Is it motion?
Motion.
Motion, Dana, second. Any discussion?
This is classified new money because appropriation, correct?
Yes. Nothing further. Roll, would you give roll call, please?
Daryl Gates?
Yes.
Ronnie Crawford? Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Kern?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Alia Dye? Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Gary Firth?
Yes.
Sonny Hall? Bill Mountain?
Yes.
Doug Vickers?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Heaton?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Ward Planin?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries. Line item fourteen, resolution stating the amount set in the 2019-2020 appropriation resolution will be continued until adoption and the state approval is received on the fiscal year 2020-21 budget. Is it motion? Motion, Miss Dana?
Second.
Second, Miss Powers. Discussion? No discussion? Say, give me a topic. On line item fourteen.
Just to continue.
Just to continue, in just case something happened to the budget, we'll operate on it past budget until it's approved. Well, we will, yes, sir, until the state receives it that we passed a new budget. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Daryl Gates?
Yes.
Ronnie Crawford? Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Kern?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Alia Dye? Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Gary Firth?
Yes.
Sonny Hall? Bill Mountain?
Yes.
Doug Vickers?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Heaton?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Ward Planin?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries. Line item fifteen, resolution making appropriation for the virus funds department, institution, office, and agencies of Benton County, Tennessee, for the year beginning July one, 2020, and ending June thirty, 2021. Is it motion?
Motion.
Any motion, who's second? Miss Powers?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? No discussion, roll call.
No, there's discussion.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, didn't say.
I have a few questions. The state sent out a mandate to the county saying tighten your belts. I think the state should have led by example by holding their salaries down before asking counties to tighten their belts and hold their employee salaries down. But that has nothing to do with this commission. That's just my personal feeling that the state wanted the counties to be conservative. They should have started with their own salaries first. But I have a few questions on some of these. In the mayor's budget, he's budgeted ten thousand dollars for a payroll specialist. Is that for writing the policy procedure handbook revisions that you were talking about earlier?
Yes.
Okay, I had a feeling that might be.
That's subject to change. It's just an estimate, too, you know.
Well, but it does need to be done. And I had a feeling that's what that was going towards. That, oh, also, on the county commission pay raise, and I'm glad it wouldn't take effect this body. But when we're not giving raises to county employees, I think increasing our own, even as little as it is, is wrong, and I will not vote for an increase for ourselves unless we're giving increases to everybody else.
You can't vote for it for ourselves?
No.
I would also say that we are giving some employees some increases. You know, step raises are an increase. Cost of living raises last year was an increase. They do get raises. Is it a competitive raise of where they should be? Commensurate upon their experience? Probably not. And that's what we're gonna work on. But we give raises every budget, every year. Now, some get them, some don't. But it is time, I would be the first to also advocate for the county commission to look ahead and look at what other counties are doing with their, you know, payroll for their county commissioners and what y'all are doing. And for seventy-five dollars a month to have to put up with what public servants a lot of times have to put up, there's abuse, and there's an insult, and then there's just sacrifice. I think y'all have been on the abuse and insult levels and not just the sacrifice level. So, I do believe, I support raising the salary of the county commission, especially when this county commission comes in at the certified rate for the first time in fifteen years, comes in with balancing two departments out of three, or two major departments out of three. This county commission has earned every penny of that seventy-five dollars that they get paid from it. So, I hope our citizens are proud of the hard efforts that y'all put in.
I've got a question. Did we give the school back the money that we promised to give them back? Last year's budget, we took, um...
Thirty thousand.
Oh, no, we took...
Was it one?
It was about a hundred thousand we took from them. And we promised them that we would give it back to them this year. Did we do that?
I'll respond to that. No, we didn't give it back, and I don't remember promising to give it back.
Now, yes, you did. I remember it very clear.
Yes.
Because I was talking and telling how I felt about the budget and why I did not wanna vote for it because of the money taken from the school and highway department. And it was stated, we will give that money back to the school next year.
You got a good reason.
If you'll look on, if you'll find the recording, I'm sure you can find it, that recording for that month last year.
I hope you find it for us. You've got a good reason to vote against the budget tonight, yeah.
So, you did not give it back?
This time in order, please, if Rachel A. and you don't speak. You're ready to ask. Do I speak?
I just... So, you did not give it back? Okay, that's all I needed to know.
Make your last thing.
I would just say that the school population has decreased. They were paid... They were paid, uh, their required amount, I believe it was a hundred fifty-seven thousand under maintenance of effort. This county commission has overpaid the board of education in this budget, three point three million dollars, and has done it multiple, multiple years. Uh, I believe if we don't get to the point of basing budgeting on the population and census of the school students, then we're gonna continue to leave no future for those college, uh, or those one that, once they graduate, uh, after high school. I think this county commission owes its young folks a future, and I just don't believe that future is grades K through twelve. I believe that future starts one day after graduation just as much, and so, so long as our population of students continue to decline, we have got to adjust in accordance with that decline. So, uh, whether we promised on a hundred thousand or not, uh, the budget is the budget, and this can, budget committee has probably been very generous, uh, to the schools over the past decades.
Yes, Ms. Frazier.
I'd like to speak, um, on the matter of the county commission raises, raise for the next year. Did you get a raise last year, Michelle?
You didn't get my job, yes, where am I get?
You did, okay. Well, I'm gonna drive fifty mi, just about fifty miles round trip to the commission meeting, plus the budget committee meetings, uh, plus, you know, other, uh, meetings, and once you take that, the expense for the gas out, I, I'm almost doing it for nothing. And, um, I, I don't know about the other commissioners, but I think we deserve that raise. That's just my opinion, and everybody else has their own.
If they thought.
Question.
Yes.
With that dollar amount being posted in this budget, as an active budget, does it not need to be relocated or moved to another line item first?
The commissioners' increase?
Yes, ma'am.
Doesn't have to.
The, the normal process is if you, you said you have excess in the budget, it just wouldn't be expended. You would have the appropriation, that way you could move it in budget amendments later, and it would not be considered new money.
Anything that's unspent at the end of the year, so, for example, that commissioners' raise does not take effect until the next election, the next board of county commissioners, and so that increase that's in the budget won't be spent out on you all, this next fiscal year, the remaining balance will revert to the general fund.
The, if I may, uh, is twenty-eight thousand dollars. And I believe the principle that Commissioner President did bring up is correct.
It is.
So that would be an amendment, a reduction of twenty-eight thousand dollars, which would end that budget line item at seventy-one thousand five nineteen. That's twenty-eight thousand dollars, that, again, we've got raises to look at, that could go into the. Can we not move that prior to voting for this? I think that, can they make the amendment to.
It would have to be a target new budget.
And then you would have to do the, re-advertize on that, you can move it after.
Yeah, you can do it a bunch of minutes, you can pass this and immediately do a bunch of amendment resolution.
I'm sorry, what was I already saying? No, that is, that is, I'd have to refer, I'd have to refer to them, I mean, I haven't had a reason to look up that issue, I mean, it's just. That is the right process, what they. That's fine, I'm not doubting the process, I just, okay.
And probably could be done also during the next meeting, be a resolution to subtract that money before you desire, by resolution.
You can do the resolution to put it back into unassigned fund balance if that's what you want. Like, I mean, you can do a resolution and move it. If you wanna amend it now, you can, we'll just have to redo the budget process.
You could do a resolution to take the twenty-eight thousand and spread it to the courthouse employees, which was a hot issue before.
Yeah, I'd say that was not over yet.
I'm just saying that that would be somewhere that you could move it to to help them.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
If nothing further.
Right here, ma'am.
Oh, absolutely.
In question of the school, the school's budget is this year, twenty million five hundred ninety-nine thousand thirty-nine dollars. The two thousand and twenty, last year's budget was not, was, uh, estimated at nineteen million seven hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. So the school budget this year is in a neighborhood of eight hundred fifty thousand dollars, higher than the two thousand and twenty estimated numbers. The two thousand and nineteen audit numbers, nineteen million eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. That's, so our budget of this year is somewhere around seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars above the two thousand and nineteen audit. The mayor touched on it. We're getting paid six thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars per student in our school. Our school population dropped, forty-nine children. Forty-nine times six thousand one hundred and forty-five comes out to a little more than three hundred thousand dollars. Three hundred thousand one dollars less from the state because of the declining population. I remind everybody still, our budget is between seven and eight hundred thousand dollars for this school above last year's estimated dollars. Moving on. As far as commissioner goes, in defense of the little guy out there that don't make a lot of money, guy, gal, right now to be a commissioner, you gotta afford to be a commissioner. You got retired oil maker here, you got two retired ironworkers in the crowd. I think we got a commissioner that's got a spouse at DuPont, maybe one at a paper plant. We've got teachers, we've got retired teachers, business people, company owners. We, with a small amount of money we're paying for these commission meetings, we have cashed out, we have thrown away a large portion of our population that can't afford to come to those meetings. We may have a brilliant mind out there making twenty-one thousand dollars a year that's got a house and got children and got a wife they gotta provide for, that they can't take off, and they can't be here. So what do you want me to be? You want me to be a doctor like, uh, like in the previous commission, you want us to be retired oil makers? That's my argument in defense of the people out there at home providing for their families at their homes. Moving on. We started this budget out, general fund, about five hundred and seventy thousand dollars under funding. That would be if you looked at the second draft. We've got two entities in this county. Because of these two entities, we never had a serious conversation about, uh, budget cuts or tax increase. One of those entities are the banks, and what the banks paid in excise tax. Nearly three hundred thousand dollars compared, uh, nearly sixty thousand dollars three years ago. And second, not least, more so the banks, is the state prison dollars. I know the sheriff's very unhappy with this budget, there's things he wanted he didn't get. I think the two thousand seventeen audit shows less than two hundred thousand dollars for state prisoners. Right now, this fiscal year, the jail, Mr. Woods, is at the doorstep of seven hundred thousand dollars for state prisoners. Those are two reasons that we haven't had to talk about, property tax increase, or we didn't have to talk about cuts or layoffs. Moving on. I'm asking the mayor, and there's probably an issue or problem with this, and when he finds it, he can tell me what's wrong with it. I'm asking the mayor and our trustee, Sherry Beasley, to greatly consider taking our county's money and investing, it's the highway money, the school money, the general fund money. We've got a, we've got a Apex Bank, we've got four point three million dollars invested in their bank, we've got one point five million invested in First Bank, we've got a little over six million invested in Carol, um, that may have. Carol Bank Trust. Uh, local government investments, I think that's from the state, somebody have to give you a better example, and I can't do that either. We've got over seven million dollars invested in them. So we've got this money spread around, and we have drawn in interest this year, as of today, about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in interest earned. Pretty good. I'm gonna ask the mayor to greatly consider investing this money into the bank that is paying us the most in excise tax. Are we gonna lose a little bit of interest? We've got one bank that's paying us ninety-seven point one percent of the excise tax, they're called Apex. You got the other banks that are just drops compared to what they're paying. I'm not gonna go on and beat this up, I'm sure the mayor can think about it, look into it, and we'll have a good response to it. But that's what I think about Apex and what they're paying to the county. All of the banks are paying property taxes. Apex is paying the bulk of the excise tax. You've got the TVA credit union that's exempt, they don't have to pay excise taxes, probably go down there and find that car rental she provided. I'm gonna ask the mayor and the commission, I've asked him once to meet in private, to consider the meeting, whether that be commissioners or professionals, to study, to look into the step up, way, uh, raises. All the wages, longevity, all county workers, include the sheriff and include the jail, if the sheriff wants to be included. Uh, this was accomplished for the county workers under the past administration, I think that was called the steering committee. The budget worked, the budget, that's what I'm saying, let me go on down here. Budget committee worked different from budgets of the past, and it wasn't what we're seeing. Far from perfect, guided and on course, I hope to become understood and accepted. This somewhat new budget committee making new challenges, asking new questions, asking the right questions, were greeted, weren't greeted with open arms. In fact, I was witness to rudeness, bullying, being taught bound to, angry, and exiting the door. And I just want to say the budget, I admire all the budget committees for staying on target and rising above all this kind of committee, budget committee, we don't have a magic wand. It's all about limited resources. I'm gonna yield the floor on that, y'all.
I just wanna, uh, jot down a few things as you were talking, Commissioner President, just, uh, uh, tell you, I, I'm all for doing a salary compensation committee, we're definitely working that way, we budgeted money this year into that HR professional line, as Ms. Hill, uh, you know, pointed out. So we've, we've already been anticipating that and, and doing it right. Uh, I do believe that, you know, although the department heads are critical to this, I also believe it's critical to have the voices of Ms. Holliday on that committee as much as Ms. Bocher. Uh, we need, you know, it's just not gonna be department heads on that committee, it's gonna be, you know, frontline workers in the way in uh, just as much, but, but at, at the end of the day, they will be working under the guidance of this HR professional, and so I think it'd be an educational endeavor on all ends. Franchise and excise tax is a cyclical tax, it's based upon volume of loans written. We know that Apex is the largest bank in our community, and that's why they pay more, simply because they're writing most of the loans. But the economy can impact that just as easy. Tomorrow, the economy can tank, people quit writing loans, they quit borrowing or whatever, and now, you know, we've come to rest thinking we're gonna get four hundred thousand dollars in excise tax, and we may only get two hundred thousand, so we have to be very sensitive to, to being totally, totally reliant on the franchise, franchise and excise tax. I do know the committee, the trustee, uh, is empowered to set up what you call a revenue committee, and on that revenue committee, they may appoint a local citizen, a local banker, to say, we're, we've got this many millions of dollars of county money, what's the best way to invest it? I would hope that, we, we, we need to look into who's on the revenue committee, so that's a good question for the trustee, and, uh, because honestly, if they're doing the right thing, for the taxpayer, they're going with the bank that pays the best interest, you know? But then again, there's that fine line, that Apex Bank employs so many people within our community, you know, and they pay so much in franchise excise tax. So I'm sure there's a lot of sensitivities going to that, those considerations, but at the end of the day, the taxpayers don't care, they want whoever's gonna pay us the highest rate. And, uh, so I'll try to find out a little bit more about the revenue committee and, and report back, back to the budget committee, you know, so. So, as you would say, I yield the floor. Chair.
Chair, go ahead.
I need a rule, Commissioner, Third District, Frazier. Uh, Ms. Rasher works on my books for, for my companies, we'll make sure there's not a conflict of interest.
That didn't come from attorney right there to, to see the things.
It's always better if somebody lets me know his name and his fans.
When you come back, it's just gonna happen. Next, once you give answers at next meeting.
We're both, not even in a relationship, it means that, I think that, to talk to the commissioner and Rasher about our relationship, I've been. She's my CPA. Four years. Does that influence your decision? Not at this time. There's your answer. I wanna make sure this one is on the top. So you believe yourself it's not a conflict of interest as of this. I can go both ways, I can go both ways with that, but technically.
I'll see, I, I tell you what, let's stay where we're at on that revenue.
I'm not part of.
We'll come back to that, it's, it's very, if you don't mind. I thought you got your answer already, but let's stay on track. We, we're right now at a roll call vote on nine item fifteen, we got off in the discussion, let's, uh, have a roll call, it's one of them. That's what we're mighty, sir, Professor.
Yeah, I would like to say before we go, um, I'd like to express something that, you know, I didn't like it because we took money from the school last year and this year, and I don't like it because we took money from the highway department. And I, I've been talking about being fair tonight, and I don't think it's fair for, for us to vote for our county commissioners to get a raise, because our employees did not get a raise. And if you look back at the, um, the way the economy is right now, we've got so many people that have, uh, lost their jobs, and that they don't have an income, and they're having trouble getting their unemployment started. And you also, like, the school, the school had to get rid of employees, so, you know, being fair, I don't think it's fair for me to vote for a raise for the county commission. But if you take the budget in whole, you know, we could say that we could pick out little things in the budget that we don't like, and we could say, well, I'm not gonna vote for it just because of this one thing or because, well, there's two things I don't like, well, we would probably never get a budget if we did it that way. But there are things about it that I don't agree with, and I just wanted to make that clear.
Ms. Powers.
Yes, I just wanted to, um, to say that as far as the, um, the highway department's budget, um, yes, we did cut it. Uh, we, we, uh, we cut the expenses because it was, uh, what, what, almost a billion over budget, huh?
We did cut the expenses but not revenue.
Yes, we didn't cut the revenue, but we cut the expenses. And so, um, we, we added the, the capital, um, the capital projects to the revenue, and it still came out, uh, uh, short because the expenses were so high. And so that's one reason why the highway department budget is cut, and, and, uh, every department is supposed to have a balanced budget. Your revenue and expenses, uh, should equal.
Ms. Powers.
Because I know this is on Facebook, and just to put it in layman's terms, this is the same analogy of giving your child a twenty-dollar bill to go get a gallon of milk, okay? They're supposed to bring you back seventeen dollars, but they keep it. So, so all we're asking for was five dollars more, hey, can you give us five dollars more and keep twelve in your pocket? That's kind of the same analogy, it, it's, what's happened, and this is, of course, happened over decades of time, is that we have been overfunding and overfunding and overfunding, and reserves are being built up into schools, highway, and the county is basically sitting at bottom dollar, so. is basically sitting at bottom dollar, so when it comes to building an industrial park, what, is there, do y'all have a reserve? Had, had we not sold a hospital, the county wouldn't have a penny in reserve. You see, the county has not had excess funding to go build an industrial park, because the reserves that we should have been building has been going to overfunding, and that's why it's important, and the schools came to, the school sacrificed this year, I applaud them, uh, you know, this is the first time, and, you know, Director Florence, I love the dead, you know, he'll tell you, this is the first time that, that they've had to cut a maintenance of effort, but they probably should have been doing it about twenty-five years ago as well. And maybe it's the same, same thing with the highway, so all it is is a start, it's about us adjusting our attitudes, but, but the highway department came in and within so many minutes, worked with the budget committee, and they got down to that number they had to get down to. I commend them, I commend the schools, everybody has worked on this budget, and for the first time in fifteen years, hopefully y'all are about to approve a budget with the certified rate. And, and, you know, y'all have worked and worked for twenty, I know, twenty-two months since this new commission came in, I, I applaud you, I mean, I, I, we can tweak the little things as we go, just like I said, we can come back next month and we can adjust the salaries, we can adjust the commissions paid, we can tweak these things, but as Commissioner Ward said, you know, overall, the budget's pretty solid, but it still needs a little bit of.
I would just like to say too that, um, I would like to commend Buck Carter and Mark Funtz, because they said that they are, um, pleased with the budget and that they are satisfied and that they can manage this year, and they're all capable of that.
Nothing further, Sheriff.
Yes, sir, I don't take it to mind, y'all have, y'all are not pleased with the budget at all, uh, the main thing I'm not pleased with is it wasn't even considered, I turned my budget in, I wasn't told what any budget committees were gonna meet, uh, I didn't get to say anything, explain why I asked for what I asked for. Uh, last year, the county commission voted to take all of the contracts that we had with our commissaries, funds, everything that we had coming in, so when you take that and put it with what Rocky was talking about earlier, with, uh, what we brought in this year, it comes to about eight hundred thousand dollars that we brought in and still got our budget cut, plus I was informed that we wasn't gonna get any vehicles this year, uh, because somebody decided we need to skip a year before we start leasing cars, well, if you go ahead and look ahead on this leasing thing, you're gonna find out y'all are not gonna do it, uh, 'cause it's gonna come out in four years, you're gonna be paying every year a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, a little over that, to get, to get the cars, that's gonna be, be a continuous thing in four years, and you're not, I don't think you're ever gonna do that, but, uh, that makes me sing, but I just think it was a slap in the face of the sheriff's department, that I was told by several commissioners in here, if you can bring us in two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand, we'll give you what you need, but we brought in eight hundred, and we didn't get nothing, and we got a budget cut about nine thousand dollars, plus no vehicles. I've still got two empty spaces of employees right now, and when I put them to work, I don't have cars for them, because I don't have anything to back up cars, when a car goes in shock, I don't have a car for me to drive, so therefore we double up on, on the cars and the miles really double up. The new cars that we've been talking about in the past, those twelve we've all come in that we had to buy, those new cars we're talking about have got over a hundred thousand miles on each one of them, so with not getting any new cars and not getting any more money put over in, in, to maintain those cars, and my budget getting cut, there's nowhere for me to make it from, so when a car breaks down, and we're gonna have a lot more break down, there's nowhere for me to go with this money, and I don't have enough cars to put all my men in. I know when I get done talking, mayor's gonna say something, and he's gonna make him up like an idiot, and y'all are gonna talk me down, and that's fine, I don't care, but the fact is fact, we wasn't told about it, and when I tried to end up in law enforcement back here, it turned into a debate between me and the mayor, nobody else said anything, and I finally just said, you're right, I give up, I'm done. We cannot stay within this budget, so if you pass it, pass it, but we, there's no way we're gonna stay within this budget, and so I want you to know, I'm gonna be coming back asking for money, and I don't know how we're gonna survive on what y'all are giving us, but it's a total slap in the face of the sheriff's department, law enforcement across the nation is getting hammered right now, I sure didn't think it was gonna come back home, it was gonna get kicked down here, but I guess that's the way it is, I ain't got nothing else to say, I'll just say whatever we want to say about me, and I'll say your list, it's a dirty shame what's happened to the sheriff's department, thank you.
Sheriff, um.
Yes, Phil.
With road for schools, have you anything that you're gonna say about this budget?
There was a speaking, it's like, uh. Mr. Martin, will you not speak for me?
I, I didn't come up in a citizen form because I, I thought we were gonna vote on the budget, but I did, I did wanna bring up something, the, uh, the overfunding of schools, I just want y'all to know that the BEP does a minimum requirement, and it's like three point seven billion, in our county it gives six point four, but you gotta realize that's a minimum, you can look at most counties throughout the state, and they give a whole lot more than the minimum requirement, I, as I told the budget committee, um, the mayor said that they've been overfunding schools, I respectfully disagree, there's, there's no just, I disagree, we have seven schools, twenty-two hundred kids, you go to our surrounding counties, they'll have about three or four schools with the amount of students we have. I'll tell you, just like I told the budget committee, the elephant in the room is, if you continue to cut our maintenance of effort, then we'll start, we'll, we'll have to look at consolidating our schools, I mean, that, there's no issue about that, but this year, this year, it's tough, it's a tough budget year for everybody, and I told the school board, yes, you know, nobody's happy about the maintenance of effort being cut, but we can, we can survive this year, and I think that's kind of a mole my family's in, I mean, they're so uncertain times, but the one thing I don't understand is, the highway department and the schools tend to get ripped for our fund balance, and I just want you to think about this, our expenditures are right around twenty-one million dollars, and Mr. Preston brought it up, we're gonna put close to a million dollars back in there this year, but what would you want me to do when schools closed, Marshall, to have to spend it? But I promise you, we could have, we could have spent every penny of it, but that's not physically same, now, I'll probably be up here next month, probably with, with a resolution buying a whole lot more computers, if you've watched the news today, because we did receive five hundred and ninety thousand dollars in, uh, CARES Act money, but that goes nowhere, when you start buying two hundred machines, uh, sign a contract back there with my chair, I'll go for eighty thousand dollars to, um, provide virtual learning for our students, so, I, I just, um, I, I just want y'all to know that on part of the schools, our teachers, um, you know, they deserve a raise, surely they deserve a raise, and they will get a raise, but they're a step raise, but, you know, we are gonna put a bonus in there, we're losing over, about five hundred and twenty thousand dollars in revenues this year, close to right at, um, four hundred, uh, you know, could y'all have cut more? Yes, you could have cut, my math says about a hundred and forty-four, Ms. Brasher says a hundred and fifty-seven, but it was a hundred and fourteen, and that was in sales tax, and that's, uh, you know, hopefully we'll map those up, um, but I wanted to go back to, our expenditures are twenty-one million, and we have a little over five million in fund balance, that's about twenty-seven percent. The county's expenditures are ninety million, and you have five million in fund balance, and that's fifty-seven percent, and I, I, I don't understand, uh, we, I hear the term balanced budget, uh, I think three or four years before I was director, and every year I've been director, we've had to use money out of fund balance to balance the budget, the comptroller approves that budget every year, no questions asked, um, so, and I've talked to several directors in surrounding counties, and they did the same thing, they have to pull money out of reserves for balanced budget, yes, it would be great, but when you're talking about a twenty-one million dollar budget, and you're putting three or four hundred thousand back in for fund balance each year, that's two or three percent, that, that's, I hope you do better than that at home, so, I, I just want you to know that the school system's gonna work with the commission, y'all have always worked with us, but it, it's a tough year to say we're doing cartwheels, it is the first time funding balance or maintenance of efforts ever been cut, you know, hopefully we'll go up, my, my goal would be, if we go up in students next year, and our maintenance, and our BEP goes up, then I might come up and say, hey, could we maybe raise it back to where it was taken away? If we stay where we're at, we should be fine, and we're probably gonna stay where we're at, or, let's pray we do, we're probably gonna lose a lot more students to help people get back to this normalcy, so, um, the other thing, um, the sheriff picked up, and I may just want to the budget committee, I just told next year that we can work more together as, as a, as a group, um, we didn't get our estimated revenues until about a week before we passed our budget, but that's okay, 'cause we have, we, we can make that work, but, um, and, and I'm not saying it's the budget committee, I, I take just as much blame, but as a commission and a mayor and a school board, we need to start making, at least meeting in November and get together and saying, hey, this is what we're looking at, and this is what we think we need, instead of waiting till the last minute of the year, so, you know, our teachers, unlike everything, and our poor supervisors at central office, it's, it's been, my hair's turning gray, thank goodness it's not falling out, but it, it's, it's been a, been a tough three months, so, I'd be glad to answer any questions, um, I'm not gonna get personal, but I, I just, I just wish in the future, if y'all have questions about the budget, call me, don't call other directors of schools in surrounding counties, don't call the state department, um, you know, you can do that, but I assure you, I probably have just enough knowledge to answer those questions, and so, you know, I don't know why any of you would call other directors of schools or, or state department about something I've done without calling me first, I don't know why I've ever, what I've ever done to this commission for you to do that, so, if you have questions for me, um, I will assure you that, uh, I, I never miss a meeting, I'm always here, so I try to keep up with what's going on, we have a wonderful school board, very supportive of our students, but just challenging times, and, um, we can live with the budget, in short, so, any questions for me?
Martin, I think I will say one, the, the, my knowledge, I'm, I'm, I wish, but three million of that five million is a hospital fund, you know, which, we can't, actually, ain't supposed to operate that, so that leaves you really with just, uh, less than two million in it, so we don't really have the full, as you say there.
Which still, that, that is the higher percentage of your closure, so it's about the sum, that, that's, you know, here.
I wish you'd take a hospital fund and bank it somewhere and leave it in any way it's with a.
I think we've grown it because in the five, seven years I've been director of schools, I've been the last hole, we've been really blessed with subs tax, and I hope that continues, we're gonna do this year, which is amazing, but, you know, it looks like our subs tax are gonna be over what was projected again, so, any questions for me? Thank y'all for what you do.
Thank you, Martin. All right, gentlemen, we've skirted and talked, let's go back to.
Chair.
Yes, Paula.
Can I, can I?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Forbes, I just wanna apologize that we weren't able to get you to say kind of revenues any sooner, with it being the reappraisal year, we had to wait for the certified tax rate, but this next budget cycle, we're definitely gonna put that as a priority so we can get that to you guys a lot sooner. Um, Sheriff, I really, I, I know that, you know, I'm perceived as the bad guy to your department, and I, I apologize for that, but, um, I hate to hear that you feel like your budget has been cut, or that you guys are being, um, mistreated here at home. So I just wanna point out, if you look at your budget, the sheriff's budget was not cut, okay? The sheriff's budget on page sixteen, your total, it may reflect two decreased line items, and that's your law enforcement equipment and your other equipment, but, just as we did last year, your law enforcement equipment was actually put in Fund One Seventy-One Capital Projects, so your operating budget fifty-four, one-ten is the same funding, now, I'm not saying that that's good, I'm not saying that's bad, 'cause I know you feel you guys need increases, I'm not gonna argue that, I'm just wanting to point out that your total budget is the same as this nineteen-twenty fiscal year, um, you've got thirty thousand dollars that was actually put in Fund One Seventy-Eight, Other Capital Projects, on page sixty-six.
On sixteen, what page?
And that would be for vests and a van, a transport van, so you do have those funds there, plus, we also budgeted four hundred and forty thousand dollars on page fifty-nine in Fund One Seventy-One General Capital Projects, and that four hundred and forty thousand dollars was budgeted to get you new security camera system and a Sally Port, I don't even know what that is, but, um, so, and then you had an increase in your fifty-four, two-ten jail budget, what, seventy thousand, seventy thousand, so, we tried to do the best that we could, granted, you know, we may not have been able to give you everything that you've requested and asked for, but we did try to give you the van, uh, budget for vests, and the Sally Port, and the camera system, and still keep your operating budget what it was this year, the, the vehicles, we all, we know that that's an issue, and we're working towards that, but that's an awful lot of requests that we had on top of everyone else's, so, this is a very stressful process, and we really tried to meet some, a lot of your needs, so please don't feel that you're being picked on, or that you're not getting what you asked for, we really tried, we really tried to meet some of your needs.
I understand what you're saying, Sally Port project and the cameras and stuff will come out of the tail of the gas company, that's, that's what's there for, and this has to be upgraded, as far as the vests, that's a requirement, they have to be replaced every five years, so that was an issue that asked to be, it didn't improve us, and he had just given us what we had and needed, the transport van was actually, the boss is, comes out of mayor's head, and all the transport vehicles, that county comes out of that, it's coming out of wherever, as long as we get it, the two transport vehicles I've got, they're about over three hundred thousand, the judicial system is giving me a hard time because I keep turning people down, and we've got all these lengthy, long transports, West Johnson, uh, we've got some waiting in Florida, different places, and we have a lot of them, and I, I have to keep telling them, we can't go without it, because I don't have a vehicle that's roadworthy to go, and if we go on one of our patrol cars, then that backslows our momentum if we don't have that to begin with, but right now, I don't have enough cars, run of the cars, to put everybody in a car, and that's one of the things you kinda hit on, now, these law enforcement officers are so hard to get, that everybody in every county has a takeoff car, and we don't have that, so that pretty much limits me just to about five in hand, uh, so, I, I'm kinda at a standstill as to what I can do, I have no idea, with all that other money being taken last year, with that some money, we could kinda work this part out.
Sure for you, are, are you trying to put a car to every person that you hired, your officer, that's what you, I mean, I wouldn't worry, you're trying to give each man you hired, their personal car, or his dual, sheriff and sheriff's.
As long as he lives in, in the county, he has his car, he kind of has a takeoff car, I don't know, but it's a, it's a safety issue that we run upon years ago, we're spread out, our officers are spread out all of camp, coronators are, like, anything might come along, uh, response out of our county is so long, if I've got officers, if anyone in Shugetree, uh, we get called out, and this is not, we would be money ahead if we had more officers closer to what was only recommended by the government, we should have thirty-one, and, uh, that's a recommendation, we've got as far a ride where we're at, and the color of overtime is so high, and that's why you can't keep officers, they work, if you've only got two thirds of your department, uh, staff, they're working overtime, they never get any days off, and they're in court the rest of the time, so, there's no way that you can keep officers when you walk across the street and make more money, you don't have to go to court, it's a, it's a bad situation, I'm not blaming the county commission, but I, I can't. But I, I cannot operate with what we've got. I cannot. I've been in this for thirty years. And I guess my opinion doesn't mean anything, but I thought that's why I got elected to this office, of his experience, and can share that with the county, is what we need to do. But my word don't mean nothing over somebody that's never been in the office and knows anything about it. It's just, no, we're not gonna endorse that, and it's never discussed with you. I, I, I do have to take that as a personal slap. I don't even myself, whatever commandment works in my office down there. I'm not discrediting anybody or just telling them, "You didn't do us right this year", and I, I appreciate you explaining that. And we don't blame you.
And I, and I do, I do hate that, you know, when you say like the vests are mandatory or, you know. I know that these things are mandatory, but there's still a need. And we still have to try to figure out how are we gonna pay for it? Where are the, where are the funds gonna come from when we don't increase the property taxes? And when you do, you know?
I don't base it on profit. I don't, my, my problem is that.
That's only when we've got there a couple of revenue would be a direct increase to support what you want. I mean, the money, the money they've got left in the funds is not, they got what, a little over seventy thousand dollars left in the bank by the underfund to support other needs.
When you bring in eight hundred thousand for, and you only ask for about five hundred of it back, less than five hundred of it, that carry your officers, we're paying for all officers. We're paying for all vehicles. We're paying for all the things we asked for. And there's still three hundred thousand to plus, and we don't get any of it.
Look at your expenses, totally expenses that we put in your budget. So where'd that money come from? Your total expenses you put in the sheriff's budget is over a quarter.
He's talking about...
I'll just say, I'll just say eight hundred thousand dollars in income is not profit, okay?
You can't turn a profit with Jack.
Okay, but simply because we bring in eight hundred thousand dollars in contracted revenue, doesn't mean we bought in eight hundred thousand dollars revenue. There's also expenses to that eight hundred thousand. So let's say it offsets at half. Let's just say, but, okay, well, and we've never been given a number, okay? So, so let's just say it's half. Let's just say it's four hundred thousand. So that's what they're, the commission has to work with, you know, whatever that profit line is. And they need to see some consistency. We told you at the very beginning. There's got to be some consistency. You can't just come one year and then ask for this, just like with the vehicles. I guess, I remember when that bond resolution or a, a bond note was passed, uh, they appropriated you for twelve cars. I believe you've gotten fifteen cars so far, whatever. You've gotten a few extra. But did you go buy all of them at one time? Are they, are all of them five years old?
The twelve cars.
Okay, and that's what we said was the problem. We should've spaced it. We have got to get on a consistent model. Else, we're gonna be buying twelve or fourteen new cars every cycle when it comes back up. We're, we're, I told you from day one, I wanna put you on a rotation schedule. I want the commission to have the expectation of knowing they're gonna get you three to four cars every year. Not fourteen in one year, but three to four cars every year, so that we're extending the life. And, and so I'm not hearing that that model has improved one bit, you know, that... So we have to have some cooperation here. We have to make, we have to extend. That's why we said, "Let's go through one year." Because if we'd have done it this year, if we'd have given you what you wanted this year, are you willing to tell the taxpayers that you're willing to increase your taxes thirty-five cents? Because that's how much it is.
That's the sheriff's department fault, if a tax increase because we got caught.
But that's why the budget committee makes the decisions they do, so that they don't have to go to the taxpayer and say, "We need thirty-five cents out of your pocket right now", just for the sheriff's department.
Yeah, of course.
Because that's more than waste management taxes on the tax dollar. So, so you just don't flip a switch and say, "We need thirty-five more cents." We have to have a plan. We have to have a solution, and we have, and, and you have to be a cooperative partner here.
Cooperative mayor? I knew this was gonna might happen to me. You sat here debating your last senator, nodding your head.
No, I'm just, I'm just simply, you told me that the mayor's gonna... You know, I don't tell you how to do law enforcement.
Yes, you do.
Oh, I do?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then I guess, I guess you keep blaming the mayor. That's, I'm totally fine with it. But finance is their role, and it's with the help of the mayor's office. You don't need to be in the finance world, okay? That's just a plain and simple truth.
Y'all don't want to be, y'all don't want to be in law...
But you should rely on those who work finances every day or every county commission.
I'm all for that.
But it doesn't, you're all for that. So if you're all for that, then you should be supporting their decision of how they adjusted their budget. The budget director just said, "You've got more in this year's budget than you had last year, or at least the same." So I don't think they've done a bad job.
You want consistency.
This discussion's over. I mean, we need to, well, you, you and I can talk after this is over.
Let's go ahead.
We never do.
If we could, let's go ahead and go over this. Everybody's happy.
Call a question, call a question.
Line item fifteen. Done that discussion, I'll, I'll go.
Gerald Hades?
Yes.
Ronnie Popper? Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Peck?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
No.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Kalya Dye?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
No.
Gary Farr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall? Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Vickers?
Yes.
Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Jenny Hicken?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Turn it over, one pass. Fifteen, yes. One pass and do that.
Motion carries. Line item sixteen. Resolution fixing the tax levy in Bidden County, Tennessee for the year beginning July one, twenty-twenty, two point seven two seven four. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
For Fraser. Second with Jack. Discussion.
This, this is to keep the tax actually...
Actually, we're lowering it to...
Right, we're lowering it so it'd be the same as last year.
No other further discussion. Have roll call vote.
Gerald Hades?
Yes.
Ronnie Popper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Peck?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
No.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Kalya Dye?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Gary Farr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall? Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Vickers?
Yes.
Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Jenny Hicken?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries. Line item seventeen, resolution making appropriation to a nonprofit charter organization of Bidden County, Tennessee for the year beginning July one, twenty-twenty, and end June thirty, twenty-one. And a motion?
No, no.
Motion for ten of...
Second.
Second of the takes. Discussion. No discussion? Have roll call vote.
Gerald Hades?
Yes.
Ronnie Popper? Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Peck?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
No.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Kalya Dye?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Gary Farr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall? Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Vickers?
Yes.
Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Jenny Hicken?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries. On line item eighteen, there's no, calling to no ring. Move to the line item nineteen. Any other business? There's no other business?
Please, we need to make an amendment. To the budget. To them. Now, you can make an amendment now. Just spin the rules first?
Yep.
What do you wanna do now?
I want to get the twenty-eight thousand dollars out of the budget.
You don't wait to do a resolution at the next meeting. It ain't going nowhere. It's just gonna go with them.
I'm just going by counsel over.
When that big program ain't come the next meeting, it...
If, if you actually have two options in a budget situation like this, he can ask for it to be written up on even a scrap of paper in this kind of a situation and become an unexcellent meeting. It has to be...
Just be the, if you've got something, you need to...
Or we could do it next meeting. All right, that'd be fun.
You would draw. You would draw, thank you.
And I would follow with this also, the measure of that resolution's...
Right, I think we always win twenty-eight. All righty, we're down here to line item twenty. Need a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Second of Mr. Kennedy. On the paper, say aye, or a no.